At this time, I'll call the October 23, 2014 Dixon County County Commission Meeting to order. Would you please stand and join in the fight's loop? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Commissioner Laverne Myers is out of town for personal business, so there'll be the two of us today. We need to go ahead and have the approval of the agenda, but there are some additions to the agenda. Under Roman numeral 10 on resolutions, we're going to add a resolution for the final documents of the sewer district number three. We also will be adding an amendment to our minutes. And also, the formerly adopted resolution regarding final certification of KDOT revolving loan fund. And then also designate our K-CAM voting delegate and alternate at a K-C meeting and review and consider the approving agreement with BG Consultants for Engineering Services for the Sage Road Bridge Grant. And I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the amended agenda.
Seconding.
Okay, we have the motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. On the consent agenda, it includes the minutes of October 16 work session. And also part of this, and this is one of the additions we had to the agenda, this will include amending the minutes of October 9, 2014 meeting to reflect a correction of the resolutions. And 10-0-10, I'll start over, 100914 and 100914A. The 100914 was to finalize the bond paperwork for sewer district number three. And then the resolution 100914A was to close out the transportation revolving loan fund with KDOT. So we'll have that taken care of as part of this motion. Also on the consent agenda, it includes our minutes of our work session regular meeting, but also the payroll of $338,629.07 and also fund expenditures of $180,820.31.
So move we approve the agenda.
Okay, we have the motion, and I will give the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Okay, we'll go ahead and Craig, if you'd start with Commissioner comments.
Busy week last week, trying to promote our sales tax issue. Felt like we've had some good questions, good discussion. That's about all I've got going on.
Okay. Earlier this morning, I attended a Military Affairs Council breakfast over at Junction City, and they had the new superintendent over there. I say new, he's been there for three months, but gave a little bit of an overview of some of the things that were taking place in the school system there in Junction City and also in Fort Riley. And they actually are having a ribbon cutting this afternoon for the middle school over there at Fort Riley. Also, this past Monday, I attended the Central Kansas Mental Health Board meeting, and Sheila Biggs and myself are the two board of director representatives for Dickinson County, and she's the current chairman. And so I did attend that meeting. They also had a reception for the title company, why a title company is in the process and has changed hands. And so that took place over at the Civic Center, and some of the new people were there. And then Ray Wyatt and Tate were actually serving up some of the food there. But it had a good turnout, and of course, there's two title companies here in Abilene. And I don't know, there's probably, is there another one down at Harrington or Solomon? Or do they kind of?
I think it's one down there.
Okay. There you go.
Wasn't keeping them busy.
And of course, you know, in their line of work, they're down here all the time in the courthouse at the Register of Deeds office mainly. Okay, that's about all I had. I didn't have comments on any other or any emails. Craig, or anybody else have anything that had come to their attention?
We did have a, on the Internet, there was a deal from Reggie Tittle. Some issues with late payment of personal property tax, I guess that'd be the issue was.
Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on, and if there's no public comments, we'll go ahead and have our report from Brad.
Okay, Betswee has been brought to my attention by Brenda. She's willing to serve on the Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging Board Directors in Haverford, Dickinson County, along with Sandra Messenger, who's the other representative. So today, one of your action items is to formally appoint those as our representatives. We're pleased to have her willingness to serve in that capacity. As you well know, that has been vacant for some time, and we've had a difficult time trying to find someone to fill that vacancy. I've got letters prepared for you when you get down to that item to Senators Moran and Roberts and also Congressman Yuleskamp, asking for their input and assistance on the Safe Room Grant application. And I think those were sent to you, so I assume without any response, I thought they were sufficient. We also had one to Mr. Scoot, who was the truck driver in the accident involving USD 393 school bus on October 1, thanking him for his commitment, dedication in avoiding what could most certainly have been a catastrophe there. Some time ago, Doug filed the necessary documents against the violator, ledge violator in Calmich, and he's told us that that person failed to appear, so he's going to request some judgment, I guess, on that.
Default judgment.
Yeah, default judgment, so that's proceeding.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at on that? I mean?
Comes up at Jeff Flat's next motion day, and it carries a potential penalty of not less than $100 to a maximum of $500 per day.
Like it'd be this, next Friday would be the first day it'd be on the schedule? Or, I mean, that's what I guess I was asking. Well, you don't have to know. If you don't know, that's fine.
I am not sure of the date, but it comes up, I want to say November 4.
Okay, okay.
So just like, if they were to do anything on his part, it's going to start getting expensive.
Yes, we don't.
It's zero, so.
We tried to do everything we can that would avoid that for the person by giving him the opportunity to make contact and see if that issue could be resolved before the dollar judgment begins. But as of yet, I haven't heard from him.
Last week, we had the salvage company in, and we got rid of 147 and a half tons of scrap metal out of the transfer station. The current price on that's $170 for a prepared ton, so we took in a revenue of $25,076 for that. So we received a letter from K-C. They have had a number of requests from member counties asking for, I'm doing an updated compensation survey across the state for county employees. And they don't have the staff nor the time to do that anymore, so they have contacted a private vendor to do that on their behalf, and then split the price of that up or the cost of that among all the member counties, which equates to $175 each. They did send us the invoice that if we agreed to participate in that, that we would satisfy. I think that's a very fair price for what we'll get. We knew use that information pretty regularly to make sure that we remain competitive. So glad to see that they're doing that, getting it updated. It's been several years since they've done that. So we were also notified by K-CAM that we need to select a voting delegate and alternate for the upcoming K-C conference. We had done K-work, but we hadn't done the K-CAM, so we've got that on the agenda today. And the road bridge presentations, as I think Craig mentioned, we did Brown's Home earlier this week. I've got Woodbine tonight, and then next Tuesday, I believe it is, the Abilene Cedar Center is the last one we have scheduled. So all in all, it wasn't very well, I think. Very little in the way of negative comments that I've received at any of them. Majority have been very positive, so I guess we'll see how they go. I'm going with four.
Yeah, and I won't be going tonight. I've been invited to the five-star district, they have a meeting down at Old Abilene Town, the Historical Society. It's seven o'clock, so, and I'm not exactly sure what's going to involve, but I would be going with Brad tonight, but I wouldn't schedule that.
You're going to let me go by myself for the first time.
You're old enough now.
We do have an agreement with BG Consultants that I've got today for acceptance on the 3465 Sage Road project. That's one of the ones that was selected on KDOT's local bridge improvement program, 177 across Kansas. And we've got that, I told you that we got awarded that project, and we've got that agreement to be signed today as well. The last thing I've got, probably the most important, is that I got a call late last week from the resident out of Old Forty and indicating that we had a, in the concrete portion of Old Forty west of Abilene out towards the bypass, chunk of concrete, or the concrete had started to buckle up a little bit, and it was creating quite a bump. Long story short, we looked at that, Martin and John and I went out there, they looked at it, and we need to cut out a little section of concrete there and repair that to get it back into shape. And it kind of, it's just miraculous to me that that concrete was put in there in the 20s or 30s, and then of course, that was given to the county when it was taken off the state inventory in the 60s. But that concrete's been there all these years, and it still looks as good as it does. But the expansion and contraction over the years causes that. It's going to give somewhere, and it's just routine maintenance. But bottom line is, we need to cut a little section out, put a new piece of concrete in there. The guys are going to use the high cure, fast cure concrete, much like to do on all the highways. We will have to close Old Forty out in that section for a couple days next week or the following week, depending on when we get it done. We've got a cutter coming in to cut the bad spots out. I think it is Tuesday or Wednesday, if the schedule holds. And then the following week, we'll have it closed for two to three days. We talked to the city about detouring around on Washington III for that period of time, and they've agreed, don't have a problem with that. But we just want to let the public know that we will have that and have a short detour around for a couple days, so.
And how far, what's the location of this exactly?
It's actually at Old Forty and Shady Lane, which should be just east of the turnoff on Northwest 14 to go to Russell Stovers.
Oh, okay.
West of the Country Club in that section there. There's actually two little bumps that we'll cut a section out and pour the concrete back in and match it up, so. At the same time, our guys are going to be crack sealing out there and sealing those bumps. If you've driven down that section of road and you feel every crack, the concrete joints, it's a pretty good bump. We're going to seal those in an effort to not only keep the moisture out of the cracks and extend the life of that, but also smooth those joints out, so you don't have all the bump, 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 bump as you're going through there. So we have contacted the city, and the city's willing to work with us on using their crack seal. They have a much better crack seal than we do. It'll go much faster, do a much better job, and so we'll work with them and get that done. While the road's closed, we'll get that segment done at the same time. So we've got a bunch of work out there, but the bottom line for the public and the press is to know that the following week, we'll be closing that road for a couple days, so that's all.
This time, we'll go to notices and communications. And we've got a few things here. This is, identifies it on the outside, it's religious material, so occasionally, we have some individuals that send us things that they either copied from something in their church publication or portions of scripture. Kansas Workers Risk Cooperative for Counties has sent us out one of their publications and just has some safety areas, some of the things as far as what some of the top 10 violations are as far as OSHA is concerned. And so I'm sure that's always something, we're trying to be very proactive on that as far as safety for our employees and those in the workplace. We have a notice from KDHE, and this is in regards to the water pollution control permits and applications. And there's several of these from across the state. The one that pertains to us in Dixon County is on Justin Reynolds. And this is a permit that is being reissued for an existing confined animal feeding facility. And this is for cattle weighing less than 700 pounds. So I'll let you take care of that. We also, just as a matter of notification, because it is within the county, it's just West Star Energy. This is a matter that's going to the Eighth Judicial District Court, and it's on a notice of proceeding for condemning some land belonging to Myron Frick and others, also an area known as the Bogart Family Farm Ranch. And it just is mentioning also that they had procedurally had their hearing, and they have published this information in the Abilene Reflector Chronicle. So once again, that's just a procedural item. We also have a letter from the North Central Kansas Flint Hills Agency on Aging, and just to advise us that Sandra Messenger has completed her first term as far as the, on the board of directors, and they just wanted to express their appreciation for the work that they've done. And then also, as Brad mentioned, we will be addressing that, also another appointment to that board later in the meeting, so. If you want to look at any of this, Craig, she'll get it to you. We'll move on from notices and communications. The first item of business we have is to consider a resolution authorizing the consumption of alcohol in Sterling Hall. And that was something that we had discussions on last week. It's a resolution that says the Board of County Commissioners of Dixon County to allow the sale and/or consumption of alcoholic beverages and cereal malt beverages in Sterling Hall. And this would be part of a rental agreement with Sterling Hall. Brad, would you want to just kind of give a summary of, we'd had Pheasants Forever come and had asked us to consider this, and then also members of the Fair Board in Sterling Hall?
Well, over the past several years, you, information's been approached by the Central Kansas Free Fair Board on over occasions, indicating that they'd like to work something out to allow on a limited basis the consumption of alcohol after my divots. And last week, they ran again, along with representing from Pheasants Forever, and indicating that they would like to do something like this, and we were discussions. We, well, backing up, I'd done a little research with other counties, and I think of the eight responses that we got back from various counties all the way to those had passed the resolutions to allow consumption of alcohol on their local county-owned fair facilities. And we were able to get an agreement from Ellis County that we had tailored to Suda Harp County with about four pages worth of requirements that someone would have to meet in the agreement if they were to use the facility out there and specifically use it for alcohol consumption, so. With that, Doug has prepared a resolution to that, and I presented you a copy of that agreement that the Fair Board has looked at and sent back to me that they're comfortable with. And like I said, there's only one change on there that Doug had called to my attention that's not on the copy you have. I know where he printed those yesterday, and that's that Dan, Dickinson County is insured, and that we'd be provided with a copy of the insurance policy for what a leaser may have if they use their own or another county. I'll make that change in that document before it goes any further. But with that, you've got the resolution to consider today, so.
And the Pheasant Forever group had commented in their presentation that several years ago, they had met at the Elks, and they had outgrown that facility, that it, I think, can accommodate several hundred people, but they had been up to 500 and 600 here in recent years, and were looking for a facility that could accommodate that. And they spoke to us about some of the safeguards that they were, would put in place as far as, well, the insurance portion of it, and of course, the understanding that the responsibility still is with them, you know, or any group that uses our buildings. Was it going to include a requirement that they have a reserve, sheriff reserve, or place officer reserve?
The lease agreement has a clause in there for security, and they have to agree to have uniform security, is the way it's word, in place for the event, and that security would be arranged by the fair office. So we wouldn't get, I think that's prevent a situation where the vendor that is leasing the facility can't go out and just tire, jump low off the street, and play him in a t-shirt and say, "You're the security officer, come work at my wedding party," or something. The Fair Board, the Fair Association would be responsible for arranging the security for the event based on the type of event that it will be, and then that would be at the cost of the vendor or the leasers, so. They would have to agree to that when they lease the facility.
And I'm sure the Fair Board, you know, the amount of usage would change it to the usage of the building, you know what I mean? There's no use having 10 officers or five officers.
For 10 people.
Yeah, and that's going to be up there at discretion.
And it's, it's, there is a statement in there that says it's, they use a, go on a case-by-case situation, and that's left up to discretion of the Fair Board to determine, so. And also the insurance, you know, we checked into that with our insurance vendor, and they have a special rider that we can purchase that eventually would be at the expense of the vendors that would cover special events of this nature. And so if someone, like, Pheasants Forever has their own liability insurance, and I think the number that they use was a million dollars of coverage. But if they didn't have something of that nature, then they'd be required to purchase a portion of our liability insurance, which automatically names us as an insured. But then we'd also be for sure that they had to cover the coverage when they used the facility, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Anyone from the audience have any comments? Okay, the resolution number is 102314. Motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll make my motion to approve the resolution number 1024.
314.
314.
Okay, and I'll give the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Okay, the next resolution that we have, this was added to the agenda, and this is to formally adopt the resolution 100914A. This is regarding final certification on the KDOT revolving loan fund.
So move we amend the minutes from 100194 to reflect the correction of the resolution.
Okay, and this would also adopt that resolution, so. And it was formally adopted, but not signed previously. And I'll give the second on that. Any further discussion? All in favor of adopting resolution 100914A, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Okay, and then we have one more resolution, and this was one that was added to the agenda. This is resolution 102314B, and this is in regards to the final documents on sewer district number three. And earlier, we had Dan Fisher here, and he still is here. If there's any questions, anyone would want to direct his way in regard to that. Well, I already adopted the other one as A, though, so we'll just change it to B. And so are there any questions? This is just more of a housekeeping type thing, and then Dan, you had mentioned this is in part two, because we're ever reduced rates?
Reduced loan amount, yes.
Or loan amounts.
Repayment of some of the residents out there, went ahead and paid the full amount of the special assessment up front, so. Yes, it took it from the $490,000 down to the $453,250.
That's, that is what the interest will be? I mean, that's?
That's the principal.
Okay, principal, no?
Mm-hmm.
And what's the total cost of the project? I should know that, but, do you know that?
We expanded the 1.109, just what we projected, so that's what we spent.
Okay, and then?
The amount was grant funds.
Okay, that's what we're only paying, okay, that's, yeah, I guess I'm?
$437,000 was grants, $182,000 was CBBG funds, and then $490,000 more of the loan amount.
Okay, I guess I should have asked the question differently, okay.
We know what you're asking.
I'd go ahead and offer the motion that we do adopt resolution 102314B, and this is in regards to the Dixon County Sewer District number three.
Seconding.
We have the motion in the second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Okay, moving on, we have, we'll go on to unfinished business, and we have to consider the plumbing bids for the Navar Canstep project.
Hey, we have one bid that's been received by us so far, and I'll give that to Mr. Arkin here, and he can take over and do his thing.
Well, this is the final piece of the puzzle if we.
It's like we received one.
I was expecting two, but one will work. Brian is Plumbing. I had conversations with Danny's Plumbing, and they indicated last week that they would provide us a bid. So we got one item left to bid and one contract. Looks like you received it, what, Tuesday?
Yeah.
21st? We have a bid of $32,000. We have a bid of thirty-two thousand from Brian's Plumbing, that's thirty-two zero He has some notes in here, we'll go through this and make sure that the notes are in conformance with the plans, and some clarifications. What we'll do is, again, as always, I'll submit a recommendation back to you next week, for its third day, and on awarding the contract.
And of course, you know, the review is an important step in the process too, in that way there's no misunderstandings or misinterpretations, and.
Correct.
Also just gives us, if, I know if you see anything that you need to discuss with Brian that.
Yeah, we'll, I'll, if I have questions, obviously, I'll visit with Brian and make sure everybody's understand where we're headed on this.
We did, at our meeting, I believe it was last week, we received a letter from the state, and they just advised us or let us know on this project, we'd had one other instance where there was only one bid, and they were allowing that based on the fact that this was a bidding process that was opened up to numerous vendors and contractors, and that we had, you had, the due diligence had taken place where you had been in touch with people and where they'd had opportunity, and they realized that, you know, sometimes on a project, that may be, all you get is one bidder, but there were several that had opportunity and didn't look at it, so.
We had, we've provided Dan, like, the third go-around on this for different things, and the first two we did, received plumbing, I think the first, the first time we bid, all we got was the general building materials for the laundry yard, and that was our only bid. But we've provided the state with all the, and we have a list of fifty or so vendors that we send out invitations to, so, and then we make phone calls and follow up on a lot of these, and see if people are actually interested, and they have full plans and make sure they're going to bid on it, so. There's a lot of steps behind the scenes to see if, make sure we get some, some bidders on these projects, but plumbing bid has been particularly tough on this one.
Okay, well, thank you. I look forward to hearing from you next week.
Thank you.
Did you have a question?
No, I was gonna, do we have anything to sign here from the bills and stuff before we get out of here and go get them signed?
Okay, yeah. We'll let you start on that. Okay, the, we'll go on to other business, and we have some items there, and then we still have a couple of items that we added to the agenda. First of all, under other business is to consider a letter of appreciation to a truck driver, and this is in regards to a recent accident involving a school bus. Brad, would you just want to give a summary statement on that and the purpose of our letter?
Certainly. On the, on the afternoon of October first, there was an incident involving a school bus at the intersection of Solomon Road and K-18, where a school bus had accidentally pulled out from a truck traveling down Highway 18. The truck driver, very unselfishly, recognized the impending threat and his situation, and chose to drive this loaded truck into the ditch rather than striking the school bus, jeopardizing his own safety and welfare, rather than that of the kids on the bus, so his truck was, ended up on its side and most probably totaled, and he walked away from it fortunately, as did all the children in the bus driver, but this is recognizing him for his unselfish act and offense that day, and what could have certainly been a very catastrophic event, had to go out otherwise, so.
Well, and you know, being on a highway and with the load that he was carrying and a truck and so on, and, you know, it was just a split-second decision, and, you know, we're truly blessed that it ended up in a non-injury accident, but, you know, it was certainly something we wanted to at least send him a letter of appreciation on what he did, so. And thanks for bringing that to our attention too. Okay. I'll go ahead and make the motion that we do send that letter and sign the letter.
Second.
We have the motion and the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next item we have, and I mentioned this a little bit earlier, Sandra Messenger is on the National, North Central Flint Hills Area Agency Board, but they also, we have opportunity to appoint an additional member, and as Brad had mentioned in his report, Mrs. Pat Sweeney has agreed that she would serve in that capacity, and we certainly appreciate that and appreciate the volunteerism and willingness of so many people in our community, and especially on this for Pat Sweeney. I would go ahead and make the motion that we do appoint her to the Board of Directors for the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency.
Second.
We have the motion and the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next item, and I know Brad, you've covered this a little bit, but just if you'd go ahead and mention the letter that we are going to send to our national legislature, legislators and federal legislators in regards to the FEMA requirements on the safe room.
Yes, this has to do with our application for some federal funding to build a safer amount of fairgrounds adjacent to Stroll Hall, we've worked on that for the last year or two, and put in a long time and effort for that application, we responded to a number of requests for information to FEMA in the process, the last being the question if we were committed and willing to raise the elevation of that facility up five to six feet above the ground elevation out there to meet what we've been told are FEMA requirements for flood standards. That has been, that was certainly a hand changer in the whole process. We have been very frustrated in that, with that, number one, that that requirement is allegedly there, and number two, that it wasn't brought forward to us long before this time. And we've researched and cannot find anywhere in the requirements, in their, in the FEMA requirements where that states it must be done, it's recommended, but, long story short, these are letters to the federal, our federal legislators that are requesting their guidance and assistance in this manner, if they have any influence or suggestions on where we go next to this. The situation we have is we need a storm shelter, our all-hazard mitigation plan in the county overwhelmingly lists severe storms, specifically tornadoes, it's the highest threat to our citizens. Flooding is a threat, but it's way down the list, and we don't feel that, certainly, certainly worrying about flooding is, is a viable concern, but.
Not at this location.
Not at this location, so. So we're frustrated, and these are, I guess, frustration letters that you're sending, so.
Well, and, you know, that is just one of those areas that on FEMA and sometimes some of the agencies, they, they put so many obstacles in an application that, you know, I mean, you just ask, where is the common sense, and, you know, we certainly have a project that is worthy and worthwhile, and so I hope the senators or congressmen can intervene on our behalf, but also they need to be aware that it's, the application process and everything they put up there is just not reasonable, so. Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we do send these letters to Senator Moran, Senator Roberts, and also to Congressman Tim Hulescambe.
Second.
We have the motion and the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next item we have is to designate the K-CAM voting delegate and alternate for KAC meeting, and I know if Laverne was here, he would want to volunteer as being the voting delegate, so I will nominate him as the voting delegate and Craig as the alternate.
Second.
We have the motion and the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next item we have is to review and consider approving the agreement with BG Consultants for Engineering. This is in regards to the services for 3465 Sage Road, and this is on a bridge grant.
What's the cost of it?
The whole projected cost, because of course it would come in as bids, is.
Right. I guess, yeah, we don't have.
Is a hundred and thirty-two thousand, of which a hundred and twenty thousand is a wing of the state of Kansas will, will cover on this project, we're prepared to cover, cover the extra. We are also very hopeful that when we do, that we receive bids and make them lower than that, that's the cost estimate.
Right.
We know from experience that engineers tend to estimate high, so we're hoping that it will be down closer to that, but, you know, it could be higher too, we just don't know, but that's the effort, so. This is a consultant client contract with BG for their services, studying the process, so.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we do approve this agreement with BG Consultants for Engineering on the Sage Road Bridge Grant.
Second.
We have the motion and the second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And I believe that's all we have, Brad?
That is all we've done, yes.
I'm going to adjourn.
We have a motion for adjournment, I will give the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.